Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting of May 21st, 2018 to order. And if you would, stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Here.
Spelman?
Here.
Ingalls?
Here.
King?
Here.
Mayor Felkens?
Here.
If at this time, we could get an approval of the agenda with, as amended, with the resolution regarding Canada Geese program?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Were you adding that up?
Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to add that under the adoption of ordinances and resolutions.
Support.
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Felkens?
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll open the floor now for any public comments that anyone might have this evening. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. And this evening, we do have the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on April 16th, along with the minutes from the closed session that was held on April 16th, and the minutes from the special meeting held on April 30th.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support. I'm sorry. Support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Mayor Felkens?
Yes, motion carries.
And that takes us to our public hearings this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. We have several public hearings this evening for your consideration. The first one is with respect to the resolution regarding the combined brownfield plan for the Raven project. I'm going to just simply introduce the project. After my introduction, it'd be appropriate, if there are any additional details our consultant or owner of the property wishes to provide, that they can provide. Following that, we would invite anybody from the public that's here to speak about the project to have that opportunity, close that, go to City Council for conversation, and then consideration. So, just in summary, the project name is The Raven. It's located at 119 South Mitchell Street in our downtown development area. The property itself has been determined to be functionally obsolete. Eligible activities for this brownfield include environmental demolition and site preparation, with those costs estimated to be just under $46,000. It'll take up to five years, as we anticipate for project dollars to be recaptured. And the investment of this project is just under a million dollars, being estimated at $935,000. The annual tax revenue before the project from this subject site is approximately $5,600, and the annual estimated tax revenue in the first year, once this project is complete, is approximately $35,000. And so, this is an opportunity for this incentive program to be in place to help the developer and the owner of this property recapture those eligible expenses, both environmental and non-environmental, for creating the Raven Restaurant project in our downtown. We have with us this evening the owner and proprietor of the establishment and the property, as well as our brownfield consultant, Mac McCollum, with Outwell Mawley. So, is there anything that either of you would like to?
Well, sure.
To toss? Okay.
I'll be freely free. You know, as you know, there's always a saying about you get what you pay for. And so, when we first saw this building and we purchased it, it had electricity, it had running water, it had gas, and I thought, oh, this is fantastic. We're good to go for a restaurant. But as we started getting into it, as you know, all of our utilities were inadequate for doing the type of project that we needed to do. You remember back in November, we dug up your street and ran new water and sewer to be able to do the sprinkler system and all of the other things, new electricity. We're still in the process. We've got probably another two more week wait until consumers gets us the power that we need to be able to run HVAC units and refrigeration. So, the utility work has kind of pushed us back about a month, but I think that overall, the project is definitely worth the investment. It's a lot more money than we originally had hoped to spend. You know, and at one point, you say to yourself, okay, I've got to really rebuild this building pretty much from the ground up. We had to go back in and put in all new structural reframing, just pretty much everything. But it's a beautiful downtown. I think it needs a project like ours. I think we're going to be a great fit for the community. So, we're like, we're going to keep going, and we're going to spend the money, and we're going to do it right, and it will be an asset to your downtown at the end of the day. But any assistance that we can get to sort of recoup some of this investment that we put in, more so than we thought we were going to have to, is greatly appreciated, very much so. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just add on a little bit about the process. Marcus has covered the details of that this public hearing is required by Act 3D1 as part of the governing bodies' action and deliberation for the brownfield plan. The brownfield authority approved this plan in April and recommends your approval. Once the process moves through, the public hearing, and then if you consider the resolution that provides the brownfield plan, we send that plan to the state for approval of state tax capture as well. So, I'm happy to answer any other questions about the content or process.
At this point, we'll go ahead and open the floor for any public comment as it relates to this topic of The Raven. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, and we'll send it to the council for discussion. And if you have any further questions of either of those, we can entertain those.
I appreciate hearing from the owner. And, you know, we don't get all the details sometimes, so it's always nice to hear the story on the street. And those kind of stories make it personal. You can't imagine what it must be like, yeah, especially when there's a lot of unknowns that you stumble into on a project. So, we appreciate you investing in Cadillac, and we're looking forward to it opening.
Definitely.
I'd go ahead and make the motion to adopt the resolution approving combined brownfield plan, Raven redevelopment.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Felkens?
Yes, motion carries.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Oh, to recuse?
Yeah. So, before we start the next topic, I'll make a motion, since we're discussing the Ace Hardware brownfield plan, that Steve King be allowed to recuse himself.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Felkens?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, Mayor, and members of the City Council, thank you. Similar to the public hearing that we just conducted for The Raven, we have one here for Lakeside Ace Hardware. The owner, Cannon Gildy, is also in attendance this evening. And some of the key points of the project are as follows. This building as well is functionally obsolete. It's located within the Downtown Development Authority District 2. This one is located at 834 and 836 North Mitchell Street. It might be more commonly known as the former Hostess Bakery Facility or the Valhalla Gym. The building, as I mentioned, is functionally obsolete. Eligible activities for this include environmental lead-in, asbestos abatement, demolition, site preparation, and infrastructure. Those costs are estimated to be slightly over $175,000. It will take approximately 11 to 12 years to capture the reimbursement of those dollars. The investment in the property currently is estimated at approximately $600,000. And just as sort of before and after, the current annual tax revenue is a little over $4,000, whereas the estimate is projected to be in year one, once it's completed, to be just slightly under $30,000. So, this is another project, very similar to The Raven, where there's going to be significant new investment made in a functionally obsolete property. And this incentive program will help accommodate that economic development initiative. So, Mac and/or Cannon, if there's any?
Okay, I said my thing, it's a repeat, so.
Okay.
Yep. The DDA has before already approved an interlocal agreement with respect to this project as well. And it's the same issue with the state approving the 3D1 plan.
I'd just like to thank you for considering our request, and most of you are familiar with the project and familiar with myself, at least here within this building. Do you have any questions for me, or anything I can hope answered?
Nope, I think that you've answered them in our past meetings, so thank you for being here.
What kind of surprises are you coming up against?
I bet your story isn't as good as theirs, but.
Check the walls.
Yeah. Okay, at this point in the public hearing, we'll open the floor for any public comment as it relates to the Ace Hardware. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to discussion amongst the council.
Once again, it's nice to see development in the community, and I know my husband, for one, is really excited about a hardware store being in the neighborhood. Not sure I am. No, I am too. Anybody else here? Can I make a motion? I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution approving combined brownfield plan to Lakeside Hardware.
Support.
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Felkens?
Yes, motion carries.
They have all kinds of interesting tools in my house. He can write his bike down.
Mayor, and members of the City Council, moving on to the next public hearing. This one is with respect to the amendment to our city zoning map and approval of sketch plan for the Cadillac Lofts project. As a quick aside, as John Wallace is preparing, I presume, to come up for the PowerPoint, eventually, we will have, I believe, also a brownfield plan in place, a combined brownfield plan in place for this property as well. However, we're not yet at that point where all of the numbers, and facts, and figures have been vetted out in order to have that prepared. But just as a placeholder, we'll be coming through the similar process as these other projects have already done so. So, this evening, you'll be seeing our community development director provide a slideshow summarizing the unanimous approval and recommendation from the planning commission to the City Council regarding this project. Here within the audience representing Cadillac Lofts, and also on the project itself is Dean DeCraeger from DK Design. And John, if you wouldn't mind, with the slideshow? Thank you.
As Marcus said, the project was approved and recommended by the planning commission by unanimous vote with respect to the entire redevelopment of what we're calling the former Olson block. The project is entitled Cadillac Lofts LLC. The applicant for the rezoning is Dean DeCraeger of the DK Design Group. And what is being requested is to rezone the property from a B2 zoning district to our mixed-use planned unit development district. To create eligibility for this project, the planning commission and the City Council has already approved the less than 20-acre size to participate in the MPUD process, and so that's already been achieved. The site is up on the screen. It essentially includes the former Olson Grocery Building. There are also the GND Pizza Building and Emmington Insurance Small Office Building. It's also the block which contains the clock tower structure. Not part of the rezoning, but what you will see as becoming part of the project is also a project or a lot to the east, which will serve as providing support parking to the MPUD project. The buildings that are on the site, I've already identified those. I just wanted to show some pictures, just so you have a visual connection of the buildings and the site that we're talking about. All of the existing buildings will be demolished for new construction. The clock tower structure would be disassembled and stored at the city site to be used in the upcoming White Pine Trailhead design for that project, and serve as the public gathering space on that project. With respect to site preparation, the existing curb cuts on South Mitchell Street, East Cass and East Chapin Street will all be removed. All the access will be being moved to Shelby Street. The project essentially involves the construction of two new mixed-use four-story buildings, with each having a ground floor area of 9,220 square feet. The upper three floors on each building will all be in apartment units.
And John, that would be, for commercial purposes, the ground floor?
Right, the ground floor would be all commercial purpose. On the screen now is the general layout. On the left side of the screen is Mitchell Street frontage, and Shelby Street would be on the right side of the screen.
Can I ask a question while you're on this slide?
Sure.
One of the questions that I've received in the community quite a bit is whether or not that, at one time, we vacated part of that street or allowed for the expansion of Olson to go into, you know, right up to the street? I don't know how to say this, but you know what I mean?
Right, right.
Is that going to remain that way, or are we going to take that portion of the street back?
The latest thought process is that Shelby would be restored to a full street right away, and we would finalize that during the final site plan process.
All right, good.
I believe we already covered this information, with the exception that there would be a total of 72 apartment units, with 54 being one-bedroom units and 18 being two-bedroom All the site access would be relocated to Shelby Street, and some of the reasons for this is just the very busyness of the different alleys and turning movements to try to get the access to a location, which would be much safer and allow for people to gain access to Cass and Chapin from positions that are much safer to move onto those streets. With respect to parking for the project, the minimum number of spaces that the city is recommending would be 135 spaces, 80 spaces being for the residential apartments, and 55 spaces for the 18,440 square feet of commercial space. That would be the minimum that we were willing to accept for the project. As you will see, the developer is actually proposing more than that. They are proposing a total of 186 spaces, and that breaks down as onsite on parcel one, which would be the 88 spaces, which would primarily be the residential parking on the main project site. 45 spaces would be that parcel that was not part of the MPUD, but was acting in support of the project off to the eastern side of the project. And we've been very creative in looking at how we could reconfigure on-street parking and develop a plan whereby we could provide 53 spaces in support of the project around the project block within the street system, and that would all perform well and with very safe, very safe design considerations. And finally, the developer has been working hand in hand with all our utility and department heads within the city, talking about things about, you know, where's the best place to locate water, sewer, fire protection, making sure that we have the proper radius turns for the fire equipment, just a whole host of issues. And to date, everybody seems to be on the same page. We'll, again, all be looking at the final site plan when that comes back in, but I don't envision any problems, seeing as where we're at right now with the project. And that's it.
There are three quick points, and don't go too far in case the council has questions, John, but three quick points I wanted to iterate. One is, after tonight's action and consideration, that puts the ball back into the lap of the property owner slash developer, where they then need to refine and polish their plan and submit back to the planning commission for additional analysis, review, and consideration of what would then be considered the final sketch plan. That final sketch plan then goes back to City Council for your additional review and consideration. And so, this is yet a preliminary step as a part of a much longer protracted process that's involved with the development on this site. So, that was one point. The second point I wanted to make is that this is a very unique project, in so that it's truly a public-private partnership between the City of Cadillac, the developers, the State of Michigan, MEDC, and Michigan Strategic Fund. So, there'll certainly be more information about that as time goes on, but just as of last week, there was a great meeting with some of the leadership players involved, and they're all very excited about Cadillac and this project. And then, the third component that I just wanted to mention is that this project is also a market rate development. And so, what I mean by that is that it's not a Lytec or Mishta-type of subsidized housing project whereby you have to income-qualify to be able to rent or lease space there. The whole premise or idea about trying to create this development in our community downtown is to establish this type of mixed-use facility whereby you're creating a level of residences at a market rate that's not income-qualified, mixed in with a commercial use that'll help be a catalyst for future and continued economic growth and development in the downtown and in the community as a whole. So, it's, I know it's a mouthful, but it's really a unique project, and we're really excited to be on the cusp of seeing this thing move forward. As mentioned before, Dean DeCraeger is here from Cadillac Lofts and DK Design. I'm not sure, Dean, if there's anything you want to add or not, but.
I don't know if there's a lot to add. Good evening. Again, thank you for your time tonight. One thing I would point out, it just, I don't know if we can bring that site plan back up.
Yep.
Sandy, continue.
Just a couple of things to note. One is that the buildings are taken off access intentionally to create some sitting space outside on those commercial spaces to, again, try and give spaces for people to hang out downtown, both residents in the, when they come down and use the restaurants, or whoever may be in those spaces. Currently, we are pursuing both retail and residential, or excuse me, restaurant uses for the first level. So, they don't have any lined up currently, but that's in process. Two other points I'd make. One is that this project will be phased. The two L-shaped buildings that you're seeing will go up. The north one will go first, and the intent is for that to be completed prior to the south one going. And the other is that, as John explained, that parking, as it's shown, will be residential parking, so that will not be public. I just want to make sure that that's clear, so. Otherwise, if you have other questions, I'd answer anything I can.
And initially, you are going to be taking down the Emmington Building and the old Olson Store, right?
Yes. The intent is to take down the Olson Store and bring it back up to grade and actually gravel it, and make that access onto Shelby where that was before the work happens on the north half of the site, where we would then pull down the Emmington Building and start the first building.
Is it too early in the plan, or can you tell me what those, the setbacks will be in the corner of the building, where it's getting close to the sidewalk? Do you know, or is that too?
Well, we are allowed zero setback, actually, but we, at that angle, it's at like a 15-degree angle. To tell you the actual dimension, I can't tell you off the top of my head, but I'd be glad to look that up and show you.
So, we're looking at all apartments, none of them are owner, like condo?
They're not condos, no. They'll all be rental.
There's a real need for that.
For the apartments, yes, yep. The intent is to market to young professionals. That's really the market we're after. The sizes are not going to be large on the one-bedrooms, but the intent is to have good amenities, nice finishes, washer and dryer, good appliances, solid surface countertops, things of that nature, so that they have the appeal if they need to.
Great, exciting.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open up the floor for any public comments as it relates to the Lofts. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and take it back to the council for any further discussion.
I'd really like to see mixed-use things. It's the way, it's the trend of the future, I think, that brings, you know, where you have amenities below and living space, and it's walkable, and it's, I'm just really excited this is coming to Cadillac.
I am too, and all of these things happen, happening almost simultaneously, support one another, in that it's going to be a very walkable community, and the professionals, the young professionals that we're talking about can, you know, virtually live and walk and work, you know? Some don't even have cars, and that's what they want, so that's what they can afford.
I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance amending the city zoning map and approval of the sketch plan.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Mayor Felkens?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The next item is a public hearing regarding the consideration and approval of a resolution to adopt ordinance 2018-06 that'll establish the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2019. This is essentially the capstone of our fiscal year 2019 budgeting process. There are a couple of slides that we have just to show as point of reference, and we also printed these out for your convenience at your places too. But just in summary, we began this process back in January, where department heads started a compilation of initial proposed budgeting figures. In February and March, the Finance Department essentially completes the draft budgeting document that we then use as our format. And then, towards the end of March, I'm involved, where I'm going through and reviewing all the preliminary submittals from the various departments on various asks, adds, moves, and changes accordingly. We then bring it to essentially the City Council through a host of a few different public meetings. Starting this year, February 19th, we had a work session discussing our goals and capital improvement program, followed by and capital improvement program, followed by another work session on April second, discussing then, what, what we then started commonly calling the fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget. That includes the CIP and our, and our goals as well. We then had a public hearing on both the CIP and budget at the April sixteenth meeting, and tonight, we're here to, to consider approval of the fiscal year two thousand nineteen General Appropriations Act documentation. This is also by charter a requirement that we have it in front of you tonight for your The second slide talks about information that we received about a week ago, maybe two at the most?
Maybe two at the most.
Yeah, from our assessor's office. And so it's sort of a double-edged sword of information that we're, that we're presenting to you. Essentially, what we have discovered, or what we have been advised, is because of increased value to property within our community, we have exceeded the Headley and Proposition A caps that are in place and then automatically get rolled back. Now, projects such as Cadillac Lofts would be exempt from that because we're allowed to capture growth from new development that's occurring. However, pri, sale of, of private property that uncaps and then recaps after it's been sold, if the cumulative total of that exceeds CPI, then we get rolled back. And so what has happened is that we've been rolled back to an amount approximately valued at sixty-nine hundred dollars. And so it's not a significant amount by any shape. It is frankly a sign that things are improving. I have some preliminary information that I just wanted to throw out that we got from an area commercial broker advising that in two thousand sixteen, this is with respect to residential real estate sales, there was approximately a hundred and sixty-eight sales. In two thousand seventeen, there were approximately a hundred and seventy, and so far, year-to-date, in two thousand eighteen, there's been sixty-five. The value, though, has changed. In two thousand sixteen, there was right around fifteen and a half million worth of, of value, whereas in two thousand seventeen, it's just a tad under eighteen million. And so that's where we got, that's where we got dinged because the value went up, which is, again, a very good sign, but because of the way that the state's fiscal policies are in place, as you can see by that formula, if you wish to make heads or tails out of it.
Med information is for the City of Cadillac?
Yes, for the city. The, the rollback has taken place, and it's resulted in a slight loss to the city. We anticipate that as time goes on and we see new development projects coming online, we'll edge up again. However, when it comes to the rollback, as we're seeing today, for projects that are not defined as new development or redevelopment projects, it does fall underneath the cap that we have to abide by. Owen, is there anything you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. One thing with Sherri's question is, based on the way that these reports were pulled from the database, they, we kind of had to draw a line in a map, and so probably ninety-eight percent of it is city, but there may be one or two that trickle in from outside, just because it, you know, differentiates things by, you can, you can basically put a square on a map and it tells you everything in there, or it's by zip code or address. So there, there may be a couple of sales that have trickled in here that are outside the city proper, but, you know, ninety-eight percent or ninety-nine percent of them would be sales inside the city. But other, other than that, that, just that one clarification.
As you can see, either on the screens or in front of you, the formula for this is not the easiest to disseminate, let alone really be able to articulate, but I wanted to make sure that that was out there so that you can see how it's arrived at. There is a provision that allows for a community-wide referendum vote to override the, the Headley cap if there's a need to do that. We're not at that point today. I don't predict that we'll need to be at that point, but it's certainly an option that's built into the act should we need to go there.
So is this only applied to the operations of the city?
It does. So the, the district of, the DDA district, because they charge a separate millage, that was calculated separately, and it wasn't subject to a, a rollback. And, you know, that loss number is a fairly big number, ten point three million dollars. Primarily, that's related to personal property tax, so, you know, that, you know, that's a number that increases the top part of the fraction, which is what kind of kicks it below one, but we'll recover some of that loss through the PPT reimbursement. So, you know, there's some things that, that soften the landing on the bad news a little bit, but, but came pretty late in the game from.
This is the first time this has happened, right?
It is not, actually, nope. It happened in two thousand and three, and it's happened a couple of times for us, but it hasn't happened in fifteen years.
So although there's a little sting to it, the sting is de minimis, but it's a good sign showing that there's recovery that's taking place.
Yeah.
And as, and as I mentioned, new development and redevelopment projects are exempt from this, which will also help us in the future reclaim the sixty-nine hundred dollars.
So really, the only way you'd ever reclaim it is to be getting these developments?
Correct.
And new properties going on. Otherwise, you would never reclaim what you lost.
Correct.
So do we need to amend the proposed budget?
Well, I'll, I'll send you, basically, you approve an ordinance, and so the ordinance sets the millage. So if you look at the ordinance that was in the packet, the new millage rate is, is in the ordinance. I have it up here, I can tell you the?
Thirty-nine five four.
Yeah, so it's section six, item A, page three of four of the budget ordinance itself. So originally, that would have said the city will levy a tax at, of thirteen point nine four seven three. Now it says thirteen point nine one six six. And so that's the part that actually, where you're taking action by ordinance to, to adopt the, the levy, the millage rate, so. But I do need to make some changes to some charts and things in the budget, and so you'll get a new copy of that once it's finalized.
There'll be very subtle changes.
And this is where typically we'd be here tonight just saying, no changes since what, from what you saw last time, but that's, we provided the context with the slides just because of the, of what happened since you saw.
All right. Where are we at? We are opening a public hearing, don't we?
We do, actually. Okay, so at this time, we will open the public hearing as it relates to the Appropriations Act for two thousand and nineteen. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and look to the council for discussion or motion.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance number twenty-eighteen dash zero-six, establishing the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year two thousand nineteen.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries. Sandy, that takes us to communications for this evening.
The first request is from the Cadillac Area Farmers Market to operate from eight AM to four-thirty PM on Tuesdays and Fridays from June nineteenth to October thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Can I make that motion? I'll make a motion to approve the request from the Cadillac Area Farmers Market to operate from eight AM to four-thirty PM on Tuesdays and Fridays from June nineteenth to October thirtieth.
Support.
We see the ladies are here. Is there anything new this year that you can tell us about?
I know, we can't wait.
I need to make a correction on that. In June, we'll only be open till one, not four-thirty, but in July, we start from eight to four-thirty.
Okay.
If that is okay to do that.
Yep. We're not adding anything, so that's okay.
Yep.
And we agreed to pay three hundred dollars fee, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And also, we will be in the parking lot unless they have the awning done, and I don't think they're going to have the awning done by the time we start, so we'll have to be in the parking lot to start with. And then we'll move over there if and when they get it done.
Tell me how excited you are about that.
We're very excited about it.
Oh, they're going to get it done.
Everyone throwing their awnings away last year because, well, we weren't going to need them this year.
Oh, no! Oh, no!
Now we got wholly awnings that we've got to use until we?
I can get an awning if you need one.
So, so anyhow, that, that's the situation as it is.
Councilmember Bowman has your cover.
You can go with umbrellas, I suppose.
Well, thank you for being back.
Okay. And you have approval for the signage, too? That was part of the request.
Yes, the signage. Can we still put signs on, on Main Street?
That was all part of it, right?
Yep.
Yep.
And I don't know where we'd put the signs down here except on that street, on whatever the street that comes down from Main Street, but because we wouldn't want to put them out here in front of the, the park, I don't think.
Well, you might, yeah, you might want to, we'll have to figure that out.
Yeah.
You might have to direct people if they're used to going to the other location once you move.
Because when we moved over to the lot over there by the lake that one year, somebody came down, went right by that and come over here and says, where's the market?
Yeah, well, we'll make sure that those signs go and, and that it's very clear where you are.
Right. I mean, and they're going to know. I mean, they'll, it'll be in the papers, I'm sure, that we'll be in there, and they can't miss that.
Right, that's kind of obvious.
All right, well, thank you so much.
I just have just a little bit more to make.
Okay.
We're really thankful this is going to get done. I've been going to the market for, this will be thirty-six years. You got to get that done because I'm getting old. It'll be done. But the first year, they put an awning down the night before we was going to be there, and kids tore it down the first year, so we're thankful this is going to be permanent.
Yes. Thank you.
I have to add.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Sandy.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, motion carries.
Next request is for the display of a banner from June fourth to June eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, and the requested street and parking lot closures on June eighth through June tenth, two thousand and eighteen, for Back to the Bricks. And there is a bullet list in the packet describing requested closures.
Okay. Is anyone here from Back to the Bricks? No? Okay.
What is this?
That's for the Craft Beer Festival.
Oh. I keep doing this. It's two thousand and seventeen, banner request.
It's at the very end of it.
Has anything changed for, it looks like things have changed for Back to the Bricks, but I can't really remember if they moved it last year or not. But it's all in the park, and the three-side streets are closed, or the three streets are closed.
Lake Cass and Harris?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ending it fine, yeah.
There might be some subtle changes to what was there from last year, but generally speaking, it's all the same.
That's where they had it last year.
Yep. They're using the commons lot and the embeds lot. I'll make a motion to approve the display of a banner from June fourth to June eleventh, and approve the street closures as requested in the packet on June eighth through the tenth for the Back to the Bricks event.
And the parking lot closures. And the parking lot closure, thank you.
Support.
Councilmembers Bowman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
Next request is for the display of a banner from September tenth to September twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, and the requested parking lot closures and beverage tents on September twentieth through September twenty-third for the Craft Beer Festival. And that's the diagram that you were provided, the one in the packet didn't show up very well.
So what is the one, two, and three on here?
It's the areas they want closed, that they're going to utilize.
Yeah, and actually, one is where, that's the entrance to the beer garden, so they don't want any parking right there at the entrance. And then the other two spots back right up to where the vendors are going to be, so they want the, the space to be accessible by the vendors.
So that's the parking?
Yeah.
Closures. And are there any street closures? I can't remember.
No.
No?
No. Make a motion to approve the display of the banner from September tenth to the twenty-fourth, and the requested parking lot closures and beverage tents on September twentieth through the twenty-third for the Craft Beer Festival.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries. And the next thing we have is we have an appointment this evening, or a reappointment, I should say.
This is being recommended to approve the reappointment of Dave Gregg to the Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on May first, twenty twenty-one.
He's been on since twenty?
Twelve years.
Two thousand and six, twelve years, great. I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Dave Gregg to the Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on May first, twenty twenty-one.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you for your service, Dave Gregg.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. A few items under the city manager's report this evening. First item is with respect to a recommendation regarding the purchase of a plow truck chassis. The fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budget includes an appropriation for a single-axle plow truck. And for sort of quick reference, back on February twenty-second of two thousand and eighteen, the City of Cadillac did hold a public bid opening for a dual-axle plow truck, and we did receive three bids with GT Diesel Service being the lowest bid, and the recommendation for moving forward with them approved by city council accordingly. In this instance, we are not looking for a, a dual-axle plow truck, but again, as I mentioned, we are looking for a single-axle plow truck because we just publicly bid this out and have what we believe is good pricing. After connecting with the vendor, they are able to offer us a vehicle that meets our standards, keeps our fleet the same, which is the Western Star brand of, of truck, at a price of one hundred and nine thousand dollars. And so therefore, the action this evening that we're recommending is that we move ahead now, especially given the lead time that it takes for this piece of equipment to be built, to acquire a single-axle plow truck from GT Diesel Service based upon the reduced price from what was bid previously at a hundred and nine thousand dollars, and funds are available in our stores and garage fund accordingly.
Great, good savings.
We, so we don't have to waive competitive bidding?
That's what I was going to ask, okay.
Because it was bid.
It was bid, yep.
Okay. I'll make a motion to award the purchase of one plow truck to GT Diesel, of one, a single-axle plow truck, to GT Diesel Service in the amount of one hundred and nine thousand dollars.
Support.
Question? Yeah, so you're ordering it now, but it's being paid for in two thousand and nineteen. Yeah, so you're ordering it now, but it's being paid for in two thousand and nineteen.
That's correct. Yep, it'll, well, we'll order it in twenty days, when the ordinance to adopt the budget is effective, honestly, because it's passed by ordinance and there's a, you know, twenty-day waiting period. So, once that comes, we'll issue a forward PO for the next year, because that appropriation has been approved in the DPW fund.
With the one on-
And honestly, we, the one that we bought in-
February?
February, we're not going to get that one either until probably September, so.
Really?
Yeah.
Hopefully, we won't need it before then.
Right, no kidding, no kidding.
So how does that, so how does that work? If we ordered it in February, was it-
Yeah, we'll reappropriate it.
Was it yearmarked for two thousand and eighteen?
It was, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, it'll still be there, we don't, you know, we've committed those funds, so.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, and as, just to point out, too, as of, as of about three years ago, our newest plow truck was ten years old, and so you can imagine the risk of downtime during pretty important safety events. And now, three of the five will be less than three years old, so we've done a decent job of updating our fleet. The other ones, we bought brand-new equipment for the box and underneath at a cost of about another hundred thousand. Now, the rest of our boxes that we're replacing are the same size, and they're stainless steel and in better condition, so we're going to refurbish them, which will be about half the cost. We'll get new underneath, the underbody plows and things, but the other equipment, we're going to refurbish, and so, yeah, it'll be about, it'll be about half the cost of new, so. And we're very comfortable with the current condition, and that won't, won't be a negative down the road, so.
Okay, Sandy.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. This next item is with respect to a contract with the Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT, for Leeson Avenue construction. The communication is in your packet, and I'm going to heavily refer to it, since there are several pieces to this, and I don't want to be unclear. First and foremost, the city received a grant from the Federal Highway Administration for reconstruction of Leeson Avenue from Chestnut Street to West Division. MDOT is responsible, actually, for the administration of the program, whereas the city is responsible for engineering-related services for the project and various costs that fall outside of the grant. Those primarily include excess street improvement costs and utility infrastructure costs. Grant funds for this project will be one hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and after MDOT released the project for bids, it was awarded to Malley Construction, Inc., from Mount Pleasant, Michigan, in the amount of five hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and fifty-four cents, which was approximately six and a quarter percent below original engineering estimates for the project. Of these costs, there are approximately one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for utility-related infrastructure costs, and the remaining four hundred and seventy thousand dollars is for the street component. The city's going to be responsible for approximately two hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars of cost for the street component, less the federal funds, which again is one hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and fifty, which we paid for from the final remaining funds of our two thousand and sixteen general obligation capital improvement bonds that the city let a couple of years ago. So the request this evening would be to approve the agreement that you have in your packet. It's a standard agreement that we've received from MDOT, the Michigan Department of Transportation, for the roadway work along Leeson Avenue from Chestnut Street to West Division Street. And we do have, part of New Off Engineering here, I'm here, obviously, and our finance director's here for questions.
So I have a question. This is a Federal Highway Administration grant. MDOT is administering the project within the city limits?
Yes.
Because it's a federal grant?
It's a federal aid-eligible road, and that's where we're getting it, and as such, then MDOT manages that program.
I don't know the distinct answers to why MDOT manages, I don't know, Connie, if you can address that by chance? Do you know why?
Can you come up to the-
Sure, absolutely.
Probably the category of the road.
Yeah, so the major streets are eligible for the federal aid funding, so this project is similar to Cobb Street and Division Street that we did previously. So every couple of years, two, three years, the city is eligible for another project, so that's what this project does.
So they just require that, that MDOT is the administrator of the project, then, for the dollars that they give?
Yeah, they do all the paperwork and auditing and everything on the project, so.
All right. I don't think I asked that question on the Cobb Street project, but.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Good question.
There's a couple of things I'd like to just highlight on this. Number one is, street, the city will be responsible for approximately two ninety-three, seven fifty. There's a six instead of a three. And then, the, there's a budget amendment later in the agenda that will, will pay for, I guess that's not paying for the street, so I thought I should mention that earlier, and now I realize I wouldn't have had to, that that's, that's not covering this street, that's covering two other projects that are, are coming, Selma and potentially Cass, but we won't, we won't get too far in Cass for this fiscal year, so.
So when's this project started, starting?
June fifteenth.
June?
June fifteenth.
Okay, let's see.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation for roadwork along Leeson Avenue from Chestnut to West Division.
Support.
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Just trying to catch up on the book. The next item that we're going to be looking at this evening is regarding the Stimson Street demolition, four thirty-four, to be precise, Stimson Street.
Do we have a picture of this?
Of the house?
Yeah.
Don't have one handy tonight, and I apologize for that, but we can, we can get one and forward it out for reference. It's, it's in very rough shape, obviously.
I've seen it, it's, it is.
It's not, it's pretty close to the houses next to it, too.
Yeah.
I'm surprised that they didn't get damaged during the fire, but they didn't.
I haven't thought about driving by there, because I hadn't seen it, but I didn't.
The property located at four thirty-four Stimson Street was destroyed by fire on March ninth of two thousand and eighteen. Property was an uninsured, two-story residential dwelling. The house was considered a total loss and has been condemned at this point. The property owner has not taken any steps to demolish the house, and in its current condition, it definitely presents a hazard to adjacent properties and the public since it could collapse, and it also violates both state law and our city zoning ordinance. Because there has not been the ability of getting any kind of a demolition plan in place with the property owner, the city, earlier this month, commenced court action against the property owners asserting three, three claims. One, there needs to be an abatement of the public nuisance under MCL six hundred point twenty-nine forty. Two, there needs to be an abatement of the dangerous building under Act one sixty-seven of nineteen seventeen, the housing law. And three, there needs to be an abatement in compliance with our zoning ordinance violation. What the city is essentially doing is requesting that the court require that the house gets demolished and the property situation gets, gets mitigated. What we are looking at doing this evening is moving forward with a company to do just that. We weren't quite sure about the timing of all of this, and went out not for bid, but rather solicited various quotations, so that we'd be able to move as soon as this is ripened to where it's at to date. The property is going to be leaned, as part of a tax lien, for all of the costs involved in this regarding the legal expense and the expense for demolishing the property and creating a green space there. Whether or not the city ever is able to collect on that lean is questionable, when this has happened in the past history. Unfortunately, at times, the property ends up going through a foreclosure process in which the city then receives that property and then likely ends up discharging those liens in an effort to dispatch with the property to sell it down the road. But I'm certainly making a lot of presumptions this evening that may or may not happen. It's certainly possible the property owner might not end up foreclosing on it, and it's certainly possible that we might find somebody that's willing to buy it that can pay for all of the liens and whatnot that's on the property. At this point, there is a recommendation for us to waive competitive bidding and contract with pitch companies to provide the necessary demolition services at four thirty-four Stimson Street in an amount of nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
Marcus, do you know, was this a rental property, or was it?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I-
This was a rental property.
That's what I thought, okay.
I was, I was wondering too briefly if you could describe the process, or if there was an option to actually go after the owner who rented this property, and then it burned down, they're essentially abandoning it or having contacted us back. Is there, it may not be, you know, fiscally reasonable, but can you describe that process just a little bit?
Yes, and so, the, you know, the process that the city has employed was to try to communicate with the property owner to develop a plan for getting the property demolished and cleaned up and removing the public safety hazard. Attempts at that communication has been unsuccessful. We've not received any correspondence, both written or verbal, back from the property owners as a result of repeated attempts through the fire department and the fire marshal to try to get, to get some form of compliance in place. And that's why, is what we've had to do in other situations, unfortunately. Fortunately, this isn't a very common occurrence, but unfortunately, it does happen from time to time, where we then go through the judicial route and getting a court order to give us the authority to go in and demolish the property in order to remove the public hazard that's present.
So does it get posted at all?
The building is, noticed right now as a condemned structure, is that what you're asking?
I think what Councilman Spohman may be referring to is with the lawsuit, did the owner, was the owner personally served?
Yes, yes, the owner, the owner was served.
Yeah, I was, that's good to know. I was thinking more of, you know, public notice in the paper or something.
Like when it's auctioned, or for the tax lien, or you mean just to get in contact with?
Just to make, yeah, because, I mean, you can try to send a letter or make a phone call and if they-
Well, I think, unless I'm mistaken, too, I was looking, I was looking up on the property tax rolls, and I think this person owns three properties in town, was what, was what I found out when I looked at it online.
And my understanding is the property owner didn't have this insured, and luckily, one of the tenants at least did have insurance, but through our rental property, and maybe this isn't a question for this group, but if I'm a homeowner, or I buy a home that I'm going to rent, don't I have to have insurance on that?
I need to defer that to the state attorney.
Your mortgage company certainly requires, I'm sorry to-
But if it's not mortgaged.
It's my understanding that this one was recently dropped because of some issues with the siding, and that's part of why we have to hire these companies, this company, which is a little bit more than it would be because of some hazardous materials and their license to do it. So I think it was, it had been previously insured. A good question is, does our rental registration require proof of insurance? I'm not sure of that, or if that would be, you know, something that would even be allowed as part of that program, but I do know that it had been insured and had been dropped, and I say recent, I don't know if that's months or years, but that was what I was told by the fire marshal when we, when we did this, because initially, we had anticipated being here with an emergency report, basically saying, "This thing was a nasty hazard, we had to take care of it, here's how much we spent, here was our legwork to make sure we were getting a good price." But because we wanted to go through the court and the timing of when the court could hear it, we said, "Let's pause, we'll take it for approval first," because the timing allowed it, and then, that's just a little bit more background mark.
To also add, with respect to the lean that goes on the property, the lean is also on all of the other properties that they own within the state.
Oh, okay.
Oh, not just that property?
Yeah, according to the city, well, city attorney, that I have here, under Act one sixty-seven, the lean attaches to any other real estate property that the defendant owns in the state.
Good. So what does that mean exactly?
Better likelihood of collecting, certainly, but not necessarily still guaranteed.
Mike, when it's on the other properties and they're, if they have an active rental that they're paying taxes on, is their tax bill for each of the years subsequent to the event or the judgment lien increase, so they actually have to pay that amount with their taxes, or?
You mean on the existing property?
Yeah, the existing properties.
No, probably not. So it's, you know, the building code, especially under the dangerous buildings, is kind of a confusing mess. What it says, however, is that you can attach a lien, but it's not like a first priority tax lien, so you will get paid, but you have to wait until it sells, particularly if it's mortgaged. I mean, you could be a first priority lien, I suppose, if it's not mortgaged, right? And you record a judgment against the property, it's got no mortgage, you would be a first priority, and then you may be able to foreclose. But where you're a junior lien, you know-
You have to wait.
You have to wait, so.
All right.
So I'll make a motion to waive competitive bidding regarding the demolition of four thirty-four Stimson Street.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to contract with pitch company to provide the necessary demolition at four thirty-four Stimson Street.
Should we add to that for the amount up to nineteen thousand, five hundred?
That's cool.
Okay.
If you don't mind that amount to that motion.
I'll support that as well.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Moving on to the final item under the City Manager's Report this evening, this is a recommendation regarding the extension of a solid waste removal contract with Republic Services. I would like to add that Matt Bylett from Republic Services is here this evening, and thank you, Matt, for your patience tonight. It's appreciated. I'm going to refer again heavily to the communication that's in the packet, especially for the public's benefit, to try to articulate all the key points clearly. Back on June third, two thousand and thirteen, the City Council awarded a five-year contract for citywide residential refuse to Republic Services, and this contract did include the option to extend the contract for two two-year periods. The original contract expires on June thirtieth of two thousand and eighteen, and both the city and Republic Services are certainly interested in extending that relationship. Over the last couple of months, city staff has met and or spoke with representatives from Republic on several occasions in order to negotiate the terms of the extension, following council's discussion on this matter during one of the pre-budget work sessions. And there are five salient points that I'm going to read verbatim. One, both parties wish to exercise both two-year extensions now, thereby extending the agreement for a total- for a total of four years. Two, the monthly per-unit rate would be increased $1.46 on July 1, 2018, to $10 per month. Monthly rental rates for the 96-gallon waste container will remain the same. Three, the inflationary index that will be utilized to calculate annual changes to the non-fuel portion of the contract will be changed to utilize the Water, Sewer, and Trash, or WST, index. This will transition the annual consideration of rates to a more relevant index, and the city did negotiate a cap of 3% to any future annual increase. Four, the fuel portion of the rate will be reset to the original amount of $1.50. The index used to adjust this portion of the rate will remain the same, but annual changes to this portion will only be considered when there is a change in the diesel fuel price index of greater than 70 cents in either direction. And five, refuse collection will change from a four-day schedule to a five-day schedule, and Republic Services will be responsible for communicating any scheduled changes to the customers within the city. We did include the extension letter that identifies all of these changes in your packet that we have from Republic, and it is certainly our recommendation that the city council approve this extension for the refuse removal contract with Republic Services for a total of four years with the contract modifications as described. And again, we have our agent here. Should there be any questions about some of these modifications? I might be able to address some as well as Owen as well, or Jeff. Jeff's sitting here, dude. Didn't see it.
It seems kind of complicated, but.
I have a funny question, which probably doesn't have an answer, but like, how, in here, it says the city's no-volume limits on trash requires manual collection and increases truck and labor time. Is there any way to speak to what, like, how much that increases, or like, when, when cities institute volume, volume limits on the trash, no more than the can, then you save how much, or even a rough percentage, or just for the?
So, the no-volume limit dedicates a collection style known as either front-load or rear-load. That collection time typically varies between 30 and 45 seconds per home. When you do an automated collection, it's four seconds per home, and the set volume is much less, of course. So, those factors contribute into the overall economics of it.
Okay. What are the, what are the savings in something that's costing $10 a month, even, even roughly a dollar, two, or three?
If you were to automate it, you could see, if you were to automate it and limit the volumes to a single cart with a bag tag for excess, you could probably drop that a dollar, a dollar and a half, if I had to take a stab at it.
I would be concerned with doing that.
For a dollar and a half of the savings.
Because people will be putting it out back, or whole front.
Correct. The benefit of a collect-all is it helps reduce the blight issues within a community, and definitely is a benefit for rental properties as they move in, move out. You see that material come to the curb.
Oh, yes, we see a lot of that. That was the only question I had.
Okay. Okay, so, I'm going to make that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the extension of the refuse removal contract with Republic Services for a total of four years with the contract modifications as presented.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohlen?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Folkes?
Yes, motion carries. You're welcome.
Okay. We do have two items under adoption of ordinances and resolutions, one being the one that we recently added. The first one is the request to adopt a resolution amending the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2018. Owen Roberts, our finance director, will walk us through the communication in the packet.
Okay, thank you. First, I want to just highlight that the budget is approved by ordinance, and that ordinance includes the authorization and ability to make additional or, or different appropriations via resolution later in the year. So, there is a resolution that will be adopted as part of the amendment. The details of the amendment can be, can be found in Exhibit A. I'll walk through them one at a time. Feel free to stop me if you have any questions at any time. The first page and first two pages of the amendment deal with the general fund. The first one is a revenue adjustment, just to recognize that there are additional funds coming in for the year that will help offset some of the costs that are going up slightly. The local community stabilization authority is the power, personal property tax reimbursements, and so this year, we received a check in the amount of, well, that was $315,000 more than we had, had budgeted. So, that's a, not an uncommon situation where these reimbursements have been more the first couple of years. Again, we, we always stress here that this isn't a situation that's expected to continue, but this is the second out of the two years that, that has happened. Contributions from private sources, that's to recognize the, the money from the Cadillac Area Community Foundation and Youth Council for the wheelchair swing, which has been started. You've probably seen the frame that's up. The first expenditure changes are under the, the department that deals with the city council expenses, and there's three items that are being added to. The, the first and the last one deal with the, the online host of the city code. Just, we, we do amendments about once a year where we send them all of the new ordinances, and they take every, they analyze every line of those ordinances and then make the relevant changes across the different chapters and sections of the code. They update the indexes, they update the table of contents, all of that for us. So, we, we still do have some, some paper copies of that code that, that we just then have to change the pages, but then the online code, which I think most of us probably use, is automatically updated then when we send that, and that includes the hosting. So, this year, there was a number of, of rather lengthy ordinance changes that were incorporated, and they charge us by page. So, that's why those costs were a little high. And then the publication costs have just gone up, that we have to, that were required to publish these notices. Travel and education was just slightly higher, and I think that's, that's a good thing. Council's been participating in some of these conferences and events, which I think is, is great for education. The municipal complex department, there's, there's a few things that have been going on here. Number one, we've had some compressors that go out on our mechanical air conditioning side on the rooftop. Fortunately, there's, there's apparently two pumps built into these units. One pump in each unit has failed, and so there's, there's no contingency, and so we're going to replace, or we're proposing to replace the two pumps that have, have died. And then there's some capital outlay things that, that, that we're doing. We replaced the lights in the fire bay in the fire section. We've, we've done that project already. We've, we had some other ideas planned, some landscaping and some other things for those funds, so we're asking to, to basically amend that lighting project into the budget. The council chambers, if you notice, I'll draw your attention up at this point. The lights were formerly flickering for the last several months. There was actually six rows of three of the big old fluorescent tubes up there, so 18 total, that were really old and hard to replace. So, we did this section because those lights were flickering. These are all LED bulbs now, so we went from 18 bulbs down to just these four fixtures that have the LEDs built in them, and, and I think the, the look is, is updated now, and that, again, this project was done because we, we needed to because the lights were flickering, but it, it took up some, some funds that we had other, other plans for, and so we're asking for amendment into there. As part of that, then, the last thing is an additional lighting project in the lobby. We have the same situation with the lights and the circa 1970s sky lighting, I guess maybe you'd call it out there, but if you, if you look up when you go out, there's a ton of bulbs that, that don't work, and it's really difficult to work up in there. So, we're going to do the same type of situation. I can't imagine how many there are up there, but we'll, we'll update it with LED fixtures again. All of these.
Are we doing the consumers rebate?
Exactly, I was just getting ready to say that. All three of these projects, we used fixtures that are eligible for the consumers rebate, and our electrician has been helping us walk through there. So, we'll get about $1,300 back in the fire department, and we're anticipating several hundred as part of this project. So, yeah, great question, and we have been taking advantage of that.
And they also provide you, there's a savings then on the overall energy cost. It reduces it by, well, I think it reduces down to almost a quarter of your original cost.
They, they anticipate about a 40% savings in the fire department. Those are big, powerful lights that are on all day. They actually, on these, you know, and these aren't on a lot in here, but it's going to use maybe 20% of the electricity that also those were using. This is probably, will use 30 to 40%. So, yeah, next month starting, we'll start seeing that savings in our, in our bills. So, excited about those things. They're not, they're not free, but I think it's a, it's a good investment, and it, it just frankly needed to be done. So, next, police department, we have a retirement coming up, and so we just need to appropriate, and again, these, these are benefits that are turned off, but as, as older longevity date-type employees retire that still had those benefits, we do have reserve funds set aside, so this won't take our, our general, undesignedated or, or available reserves. This will take a, these final benefit payouts out of those reserves that we have on hand for this purpose. So, that's both in the police department and the fire department had a, a longer-term employee that retired in the year or is going to be retiring before June 30, so we have to appropriate some of those funds. The parks department and the general fund represents the biggest, the biggest change, and there's several factors for this. We've spent a lot of, we put a lot of attention into Kenwood Park, and I don't know if you've been by there lately, but it's, it's really, really cleaned up on both sides of, of the road, and looks really nice, and we're about to grind. There's 60-some stumps on the lakeside in that park, believe it or not, and so those will be taken care of. So, we've worked really hard. A lot of that's been our DPW staff, so we just need to appropriate some additional funds into the parks to pay for that. This will result in some savings in other parts of the budget, but we do need to, to get into the general fund. So, that's, that's what those wages are for. The contractual services will, will cover stump grinding on both sides of the road, you know, 60 on one side and probably at least that on the other. Equipment rental is the cost of the guys being there with, with backhoes and front-end loaders and pickups and things. And then on the capital outlay side, first, this is to account for the cost of the wheelchair swing, and then the second thing is for the pickleball courts, to appropriate some additional funds for that. Those have been installed, if you haven't been up there lately, and so, they look really nice. We, we bought high-quality nets and posts and already gotten some, some really positive feedback on that.
There's a happy guy up there by the pickleball.
There's several of them, yeah, several of them, so.
I hope he'll come in here and thank us, I keep.
Yeah. The other thing is the, the cost of the Kenwood bathhouse just came in, you know, about $20,000 higher than we had anticipated in the budget, and so, we, we are just proposing to use some of the, the additional PPT money to, to do that project. It's going to look really nice out there. Next is community promotions. This is the money that we use to, to do maintenance down at the plaza, to hang banners, to, to do things for events, things like that, and those activities, we've just spent a little more time on this year, so we need just a little bit of additional money for, to cover that work. Again, that's inside labor of our DPW crews. The last one is a reduction, actually, to the common, or the contribution to the local street fund. We got a supplemental appropriation. We'll, we'll hear about this same thing in the local street fund from the state of Michigan for street dollars. We put that all in our local street fund. We got a check for $82,000 from the state back at the, the beginning of the month, and so we're going to relieve a little bit of the burden then for the year on the general fund for that. That sums up the general fund. I put a summary at the bottom of Page 2 of the amendment, just to show that originally we had planned on, and a lot of this was, we had, we had gotten the PPT reimbursement last year, and then this year, we were going to transfer that out to help pay for the market. We've already done that amendment, so we were going to, that's basically that, that red number of 293 was a reflection of the, the transfer out for that. We've reduced that needed transfer down to, or that needed use of reserves down to $43,000. Any questions on the general fund? The next ones will go quicker. Okay, major street fund. We talked in the CIP work sessions that we had reserves on hand in our major and local street funds to help pay for construction that was coming up, and so we have a couple of projects now that are coming, and so we just need to, to get, we weren't sure on the timing of those. It looks like at least we'll be able to get them started. So, we, we probably won't need all of this appropriation this year, but we'll need to, to come back again probably next fiscal year, and just depending on how, how much progress we make on these projects before June 30, we'll have the appropriation to spend that money. So, in the major street fund, that's for mostly Cass Street because Leeson Avenue, I don't think we'll need any based on the, the amount, the, the small amount of bond proceeds that we have left from 2016. The major street fund did have $667,000 on hand as of our last audit, so this uses a pretty small portion of that. The local street fund, again, we're, we're relieving the general fund a little bit and just recognizing that we got it some additional funds from the state of Michigan, which we're grateful for, and then, again, for Selma Street, we will need to utilize some, some reserves for that construction. Finally, in the water and sewer fund, again, wanted to recognize that we, we continue to get some additional leachate revenue. Anything that we get in, in excess of what we need for our budget will, will help fund the, the reserves on hand in the water and sewer fund to be used at council's authorization for future projects. So, this will help cash flow some, some projects and some things that we need to do, which we have plenty coming up. And then there's a, a need for some additional legal fees based on, on the activity for the year. That's all of the categories. Happy to answer any questions that that raised. I anticipate we'll probably have one more amendment. It won't be this, it won't be four pages, but we'll probably have one more at the last meeting in June, just to, to clean up before the end of the fiscal year. We're, you know, accounting, we're about a month behind always, so, you know, got to prepare for, for June and July spending yet, and, and we're tracking pretty good, but we'll, we'll just need to clean something up probably at that second meeting in June.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution amending General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2018 as presented.
Councilmember Spohlen?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkes? Yes, motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The next item is our add-on. This is a resolution regarding the Canadian geese program. The Michigan Department of Natural Resources requires a resolution by the legislative body to be in place in order for us to apply for an application to them that would allow us to get a permit for the capturing of Canadian geese, including for egg and nest destruction, should we find any. The permit lasts for five years, and in double-checking our records, the permit we previously had on file did in fact expire. This is a program that we're looking at potentially using as a way to mitigate potential issues with respect to Lake Cadillac and simply the new with respect to Lake Cadillac and simply the nuisance that the Canadian geese can cause around the lake. All that being stated, there are some timeframes that are involved with this with respect to when we can really conduct this program, and it's certainly possible that even with a permit in hand, there could be a flock or two of geese that come, after which point in time, there's really nothing that we'll be able to do to capture them, especially if the birds have taken flight, or have the ability to take flight. So it is somewhat of a shot in the dark as to whether or not it'll be helpful, but it is something we would like to have on file as we did a couple of years back, and in doing so, we would presumably get this for another five-year period to give us this option.
Yeah, because if you're going to destroy eggs, that needs to be done now or last week.
And this is, this was recommended, part of the recommendation from Restorative Lake Services, too?
Yes.
Okay.
So if they destroy eggs, but what if the babies are already hatched and can't take flight?
They relocate them.
Relocate them, okay.
On their own?
No, they capture them.
I mean, they just take the babies and put them someplace by themselves?
Anything they can, they capture. Now, what they do with them, I couldn't tell you.
They could take them with their parents.
That would be my hope.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution regarding the Canada geese program.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, this evening, we do have the minutes and reports from the Planning Commission and also the Downtown Development Authority for our reading pleasure at a later time. We'll go ahead and open the second public comment. Seeing no one, we'll close public comments and move to the good of the order, if anyone has anything.
I have a question. I'm wondering if we could have an update of the, where we're at with the search process for the Public Safety Director.
Sure. Do I can, want me to comment now?
Please, if you want. Or next time we meet, but, yeah.
No, I can, I certainly can comment. Now, this Thursday, we're going to be facilitating an all-day assessment center, not unlike what we did before. We have a host of several candidates that are coming in. There's a third party that'll be conducting the assessment center along with proctoring with the Civil Service Commission. They will be helping to formulate a recommendation and analyzing their, essentially their ability to perform and do the job. I expect that the Civil Service Commission will be meeting sometime, probably in mid-June. A date has yet to be determined, in which they'll be then conducting an additional interview and scoring the successful candidate or two that gets recommended, and we'll make a determination to set the list that we'll be hiring from. So I don't know exactly the date that we'll have a new person onboard, but it'll likely be sometime later this summer or early fall pending when the Civil Service is able to get their dates in place.
I have, a couple of weeks ago, I think, the Cadillac Historical Museum had its grand reopening for the season, and it was, it was really, it was very nice. Lots of people came out, and the museum is open for the season, but part of it was on the following day, on the Saturday morning, the Cadillac for the Goodrich Theater had a tour available to go behind the scenes and see the old parts of the theater behind the new screen with the old proscenium and all of this, and the, his name is blanking out now, but the manager over there has multiple pictures of the theater in the past. He's like a font of historical knowledge of Cadillac theaters in this theater, and I was just thinking that, it was so interesting, you know, I didn't realize it was going to be as interesting as it was, that maybe we could do a spotlight with them and have him bring, you know, make a PowerPoint or something of a lot of those old pictures, and it was just, it's such a, it's a living piece of history. It's the oldest continuously running theater in, I'm going to say something wrong, but he should come and talk to us, because it's, it was fascinating, and I think it's something that the public would be interested in. I know you all would be real interested in that.
We can reach out.
Reach out to him and see if there's something that can be done. That'd be awesome. I just said awesome. Sorry. That's all.
All right. Yes, sir?
I just had a quick update. Wanted to mention that, as we talked about earlier tonight, there are a host of improvements occurring at Kenwood Park and the Kenwood Park area, including the construction of new bathroom facilities immediately adjacent to the public parking area and the public boat launch area. During that period of time, there is no power available to light the parking lot lights or to essentially provide power to the lakeside picnic pavilion. And we certainly recognize that this is an inconvenience that people are going to have to sort of suffer through while the new facilities are being built, but once everything is restored with the new facilities, power will also be restored to that area.
Do we have an idea of timeframe for that at all?
Yeah, I mean, we're probably four to, I mean, yeah, six, eight weeks, I would think.
Okay.
I mean, it's, I didn't go look at the progress today. I know they've been out there, but it's going to take a little time.
Deep into the summer season.
Well, the days are getting longer.
Yes.
More light anyways.
I just want to bring that out for your attention.
So somebody asks.
Somebody may ask, and from time to time, there's fishing tournaments that start very early, and they've asked us, hey, can you get the lights on?
We can.
Right now, yeah.
We can. Okay. All right. Well, we do have to go into closed session this evening, so would someone like to make that motion? It's a long one.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268A to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of the city manager, a public officer and employee at his written request, which we have in front of us, to consult with the city attorney, okay, and this is another one, to consult with the city attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with Wexford County Circuit Court Consolidated case numbers 13-24803-CH and 17-27610-CZ Terry D LLC et al. versus Clam Lake Township in Haring Charter Township v. City of Cadillac and Hot Family LLC and City of Cadillac v. Haring Charter Township and Clam Lake Township, and to consider the purchase or lease of real Now, we need to invite Jeff Dietlun, the Director of Utilities, Todd Kiway, our Human Resources Generalist, and Owen Roberts, the Director of Finance accordingly.
I'll support that. Well done.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Yes.
Almost as long as some of the budget presentations. Should have timed you on that one.